Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the Morganton City Council Meeting, October 1st, 2012. At this time, I'll call on Sheldon Stevenson to lead us with our invocation. Steve?
You may find this hard to believe, but I used to enjoy walking in the rain.
But not anymore.
Well, I got over it.
Yeah.
You learn certain things along the way, right? But, uh... There is... The thing I would like to hold before you is there's a need in every human being for something of the beauty of nature, the beauty of God's presence in a human life. It's something you need, you can't get along without. And I'd remind you that I came from a very beautiful place in the world. The Finger Lakes across Southern New York State. They're part of a... If you think of it this way, of world warming, if you can think of that. They're glacier lakes. See, the glaciers used to be down in that area. And these lakes are beautiful. They're twenty, thirty, forty miles long and two or three miles wide and so on. And they add a real natural beauty to that place. And so, you can understand, when I was out looking for a place to come to, I was looking for a place that had some real attractiveness, some real beauty to it. And lo and behold, you know, it comes out to be this place. And this wasn't an easy choice. I went all over Arizona, all over Florida, and parts of North Carolina. And here we... Here I am. And so, that's the thing I'm holding before you tonight. There's a certain natural beauty about Morganton, an orderliness, that I think is something for us always to appreciate. And that, uh... There's a thankfulness, I think, that should go out to the city council, but also to landscaping and the gardening people of this city, who do such a good job in keeping track of the environment and what that means. The, uh... The thing that I would like to hold before you is that... That the premise that I'm holding. And that is that there is in each of us and each human being, a need for the touch of God's beauty, and to appreciate the fact that life is beautiful, meant to be beautiful. And, uh... In nature itself, there is an inherent just loveliness, beautiness to life. Glad to have the scouts here tonight. And they're going to underscore, I think, what I've been trying to say this evening. So, may we pray. Dear Lord God, we thank you for trees, and streams, and mountains, and flowers, for our life here in this very attractive and wonderful place. We thank you, oh God, for the beauty of your presence. And each one of us, we hold up our lives to thee, that you may touch us with beauty. We pray in thy holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, at this time, I'll call on troop... Scout troop 184 to come forward and... JR, you want to introduce the young men and with us tonight? And they'll come up.
Yeah, he knows.
I'll let them introduce themselves.
Come on up front, yeah.
Those shots.
Uh, Robert Seems.
Saif Mongil.
Oryk Ra.
Harrison Siebel.
John Thompson.
Uh, Preston Rehn.
Reed Sosa.
That's awesome.
I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. And this is a lesson that you can probably put down, that you came to the Morganton City Council Meeting. And JR's been here a number of times and brings groups quite often. First time we've had y'all lead, I think, the Pledge of Allegiance. I think it's great, and I'd love to see it more often. At this time, we're going to stand. The city council will stand, and you lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all very much. JR, y'all can stay. And if they want to ask any questions, raise their hand. We've got a very short meeting tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are... We're working on citizenship and community and communication merit badges. And those require us to visit with y'all at a city council meeting. So, we thank you for having this meeting and allowing us to lead you in the pledge.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Please come back. Okay. Introduction of our city council. On my far right, Dr. Alfred Hamer, city councilman. Faris Fleming, city councilman. Lou Avina, our city attorney. I'm Mel Cohen, your mayor. Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sidney Simmons, city councilman. John Cantrell, city councilman. And Kelly Russell is our recording secretary. And Becky Brinkley is interpreting for our deaf community. Again, I want to welcome each and every one of you. And at this time, Danny... Dan, you want to come to the podium? I'm going to read a resolution for one of our department heads, one of our prize department heads that is retired. Resolution honoring Danny R. Brown. Whereas Danny R. Brown was employed by the city of Morganton as director of electric service department on April 27th, 1998. And whereas Dan R. Brown has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the electric services department, has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 14 years. And whereas Danny Brown... Danny R. Brown retired from the city of Morganton as director of electric services department on September 1, 2012. And whereas the Morgant... City council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Dan R. Brown and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Dan Brown. Adopted this the first day of October, 2012. Mel Cohen, mayor. Sally Sandy, city clerk. Make this in form of a motion.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dan, telling you, a great boy that we have to fill in a very important position in this community because electric has meant so much to our citizens. We tend not to think about it, except when electricity goes out today for about five minutes, it comes back on in five minutes. So, uh... Those are the good times in being in... With ninety-nine point nine-nine percent on all the time. And what you've done for our community is, you just can't put a dollar amount on it. I must tell you. I want to wish you well. You've already had a... What, a month? Goodness gracious. Well, you're welcome to say anything you'd like. And this is yours to take home with you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Fourteen years. And in that time, I've been in front of you a few times. And I've always tried to adhere to the mayor's wishes and keep it very short and sweet. Football game doesn't start until nine, so I'm okay tonight, right?
You're okay.
Okay.
Take as long as you want, Dan.
Now, seriously, I wanted to thank the department. Got a great bunch of people. And I think they do a wonderful job, especially, like you said, when the lights are out, they respond. You know, they do have their moments, but by gosh, when the citizens need them, they're there. And they do a wonderful job. And I wanted to thank them. And I wanted to thank each of you, because in the fourteen years, you have always listened to me. You haven't always agreed with me. But you've always listened to me, and that's very important, that you'd hear us out and then make decisions based on, you know, the information we provide to you. But most of all, I want to thank Sally, because she's put up with me for fourteen years. And, uh... She's listened when I need her to listen. And, uh... I think we've accomplished a lot together. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
We have a twenty-year service pin to present to Willette McIntosh, who in customer service encompass cable. But she is out in another state. Her sister passed away late last week. And she's in with... She's down there with her parents. And that will be presented to her this week. Public advocacy issues and strategy. Sally, you've got an important introduction.
I do. We have an introduction tonight. As Dan is retiring and faces are continuing to change around here, tonight I am very excited to introduce Greg Branch, who is fresh today, first day of employment, and our new director of information resources, our IT department. We are very thrilled to have Greg. He comes to us from Caldwell County, most recently in Caldwell County, but lives here in Burke County. And we are awfully happy to have him as a part of the team.
And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve you and look forward to the challenges and many years to come. So, again, I thank you for allowing me to serve.
Greg, why don't you shake everyone's hand, if you would?
Okay.
But we want to welcome you to the city of Morganton. It's a great city. I mean that sincerely.
Officially welcome Greg. Good seeing you again, Greg.
Okay. I need to go ahead and do this. The National Disability Awareness Month proclamation. Let me read this. It's Employment Awareness Month for October, 2012. Workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. In this spirit, the city of Morganton is recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities. Activities during this month will reinforce the value and talents that people with disabilities add to our workplace and communities and affirm the city of Morganton's commitment to be an inclusive community. Now therefore, I, Mel Cohen, do hereby proclaim October, 2012, as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. In so doing, I call upon employers, schools, and other community organizations in Morganton, North Carolina to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance its important message that a strong workforce is an inclusive workforce throughout the year. Signed this day, October 1, 2012. Mel Cohen, mayor. Sally Sandy, city clerk. Connie Barnett and Connie Brocklin. Would y'all come up to the microphone? I'll present y'all with this. I'll make this in form of a motion. Go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think we want to take a picture.
All right, everybody.
Um, very quickly, thank you, Mayor Cohen. I would like to say that in 1945, the Congress established the very first employment of persons with physical disabilities. In 1961, the Congress then removed the word "physical." And over the time, it has grown and evolved into what we see now. Our President Obama has the national representation and calls our whole country to honor all persons who are employed or who want to be employed, especially persons with disabilities. He then calls on each state and each county of each state. And like Reverend Sheridan said, and I would like to just ditto what he said, we as the citizens of Burke County, and especially Morganton, North Carolina, we can be especially proud. I can tell you, as a leader in this county, as well as Connie is, we just had an event last week at Western Piedmont Community College. There were over ten local entities that came together in a collaborative effort. We had almost twelve hundred people in Morganton that's looking for a job that we're going to help. A huge part of those people were people with disabilities. And as Reverend Sheridan said, I'm so proud of our town, because I can tell you, and we have let our governor, our honorable governor, know this, and she has been made aware of it, as well as this went all the way to the president's office. Our town is highlighted in the state of North Carolina as being very proactive, but being very forward-thinking for the employment of all persons, but especially persons with disabilities, and looking at people for their abilities and what they bring to the table. So, I thank my city. I thank my county council persons. Thank you for having us tonight. Mayor Cohen, thank you so much for making this proclamation. You are correct. There's events happening all month long. And Connie is going to share with you the national theme for disability awareness for our whole country as set forth by President Obama. And she is going to show you that poster. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, I left the poster in my chair.
That's all right.
But the theme is that an inclusive workforce is a strong workforce. If one in five individuals... Those are the current labor statistics. One in five individuals have a disability. And what a... What a crime. What a shame if we didn't tap into that talent and invest in fostering those individuals for the greater good of our entire community. You know, I grew up in Morganton, couldn't wait to leave. Then I couldn't get back fast enough, because I didn't realize what we had. And I'm proud to say that our community fosters that sort of environment, an inclusive workforce. Remember that this month in everything that you do, we're all included. And one in five... Imagine that, one in five persons who walk through your business, one in five persons who sit beside you on the pew at church on Sunday. It's a lot of folks. We all deserve an opportunity to have the best employment possible. And we can do that in Morganton, North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you, Connie and Connie. Okay, I would like to make a few comments. To bring back on last... The twenty-third of the month. The Burks Best came out in the section in the newspaper. And I think it's appropriate that we mention that one of the best employees is Mike Crotz, who's our lead inspector in the city of Morganton. The best recreational activity in Burke County is the Greenway. The best historic structure is the old Burke County Courthouse, which the city has a long lease on. And the best historic site. And the best community event, what I'm very proud of, and of course, we all help in the city, and a lot of people in the audience and in the community help with two-hundred-and-fifty volunteers, is the Historic Morganton Festival is the best community event. And that's saying a great deal. Again, I want to thank everyone for that. Sally, you have anything else to add?
I do. I have one thing. Thought I would let everyone know about the paving on West Union Street. If you've driven on West Union Street, you've probably had your teeth rattled in the last few days. Have had lots of questions about that, and lots of folks who are concerned. That is a project that is being done by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And we were in contact with them today, because I've had the question of when is it going to get done? And why did we paint lines on the road when it's in the shape that it's in? The truth is, is that once they started working on the repaving, they found that there was some deficient concrete. And they found more there than they were prepared to deal with, because they didn't know about it in the beginning. They are regrouping, dealing with that. And we were told today that we should plan to have that repaved by next week. So, another week and a half more rattling. And after that, it should be repaved.
To make you feel good, they really wanted to do it in the wee hours of the morning and night. And we did not allow them to do that. I hope y'all tell your neighbors and friends out in that area that they were going to... They were going to start about nine o'clock at night and go all through the night and get it done. Instead of doing it daytime, they didn't realize that we have a bypass people can take if they don't want to go down West Union. So, anyway, municipal power agency?
Um, nothing, except that we will be holding elections for that entity in November. More to come.
Okay. Consent agenda, Sally.
The consent agenda tonight actually includes three individual items. The staff considers those items to be non-controversial and would ask that the council consider them in one motion, unless someone would like an item removed. For those of you at home, that includes minutes from the September 10th council meeting, tax releases and the amount of nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and fifty-one cents, and then acceptance of the new municipal records retention and disposition schedule.
Okay.
Move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Under appearances, we... Don Danforth, you're on. Don is Water Resources Director. And he's going to give us an update on the waste treatment facility that we were going to go to today. But we got too much rain, and we decided against it.
The structures at the top of the picture are north of the structures at the bottom. We're oriented north... From north down to south here. So far, what we've done is there's an area over here that's basically been a hillside that's no longer there. Those are some of the things we were going to show. We've had some pipeline work that's been done from the primaries. And so, this area in here's had a lot of attention. Also, over here at the influence structure, we've got a big hole in the ground. So, we're proudly going to show you the big hole in the ground. And that's going to be where the new electrical building number two is going to be. So, that's the two... Basically, the two biggest things that we're going to talk about. The contractors have moved in... Their trailers have moved into this area. Their materials that they're going to be using and putting in the ground is in here and back in here. We've had three monthly meetings so far. And we're just gearing up. And some of the contractors and the construction inspectors said, you know, made the comment that we're just now beginning to look like a project is underway. We'll start in the southwestern portion and work our way around clockwise. This is the electrical building number two. That's going to have all of your drives and your electrical controls, your MCC panels that are currently in the influence structure. One of the neat things that we're benefiting from is the electrical department is providing a transformer, which is shown here. This small rectangular box here. And we're getting that at a very good rate there. One of the things... One of the additional things that the electric department has been able to do is install five electrical poles along this roadway here and included three-phase wiring. And again, we're doing that as a cost savings measure. So, uh... They were able to run in and jump in on it and allow us to be ahead of schedule, really.
Another benefit, not just when the lights go out, right?
Circular structure right here is clarifier number three. We're going to be replacing the metalwork inside there. This rectangular structure here is our administration building. And that's where our SCADA system is going to be. Again, up north here is our compost area. One of the things that they've already completed is this... This one line right here. And it's a small concrete wall that's preventing rainwater from coming in and making the compost area a little sloppier than normal.
Excuse me, Don.
Yes, sir.
Your picture is out of kilter, and we saw a lot of...
We've got to pull it down before... Yeah.
There you go.
There we go.
Yes.
We got it now.
Thank you.
Not touch it so much there. The bold line there is a curb and gutter. And all the rainfall that's going to be captured by this bold line, we're going to install some new collection lines. We're going to create a wall over here that's going to have collection lines at the base of it as well. And these two lines will come together here at a pump station. And we'll be collecting all that rainwater and moving it over to the rest of the facility. If we come directly south from there is the rectangle there is the dewatering building. We're going to totally revamp the dewatering building. We're going to bring it up to code. The western portion has got some electrical MCC panels, which will be removed. The eastern portion is going to create a electrical building and all of the MCC work, the controls, the AFDs and everything will be placed in this new room, where we'll be controlling the atmosphere so that material and equipment in there will go last a little bit longer. Also, inside the dewatering building is going to be a new centrifuge, sledge feed pump, macerator, and a polymer feed pump. The two circular structures next are sledge holding tanks. And we're going to be adding two mixers in each tank. And to get to those mixers and maintain them properly, we're going to have some stairwells that will have to be installed. Not too much work done there. The two circular structures are the clarifiers one and two. We're going to be replacing the clear... The flow equalization... Not flow equalization, the flow control structure number 100, because it's... The concrete in there has kind of eroded away. And that'll really improve our ability to send the water where we need it to go. This larger aeration... A larger rectangular structure is aeration tanks one and two. We're going to demolish a... An area where the effluent water leaves, just right underneath the pin there. And on the very edge, on the south edge, we're going to be installing some new control valves, which will be allowing the water to go in, but also to drain back out for flow equalization purposes. The dotted lines are new lines that are going to be intercepting the primary effluent lines and will be either going into the aeration basins one and two or over to the influence structure to be treated once again. This is our aeration basin number three. We're going to control... Replace the controls. There's a couple gas monitors and a control basin or cabinet that will be replaced. Farthest east on the project is the equalization... Or flow equalization tank. It's going to hold 1.1 million gallons of wastewater. We can either direct flow from the... Sorry. The compost area or from the primary clarifiers or into the aeration basins one and two. Just wherever it benefits us the most, we'll have the new controls to be able to move that material around. The dotted line here is a flow equalization effluent or influent line. And again, that's going to allow us to move water in or out as we need to, depending upon the flow situation. I've moved kind of quickly. Does anybody have any questions?
One of the things you just said was move the material around. Is that something that an individual makes those decisions? Or do we have equipment that monitors the need for that movement?
Well, the SCADA system will be there to monitor. But somebody will have to be making a decision as to where the flow goes. Is it going to go to the flow equalization tank? Or is it going to go to aeration basins one and two? Or is there just a little bit of it? Do we just want to fill up the piping? And somebody will have to be making that decision as the incident occurs.
Thank you.
And just a reminder, and particularly for the Boy Scouts who have been patient and listening, this is an 11.4 million dollar project. So, it is a very large project for us to do. And a reminder to everyone else, this is the project with which we have been fortunate enough to obtain a state revolving loan for that. And we are getting that at very low interest for 20 years. So, it is a good way for us to get to finance a project of this size. It's extremely large for us. And can tell you that we've already filed for reimbursement. When we started planning for this, three years ago?
Yeah.
At least three. And doing some engineering work. You'll recall that we basically up-fronted part of the engineering costs with the hope of getting that reimbursed with the loan. And that has been accomplished. We have received 1.3 million dollars in reimbursement from the state for those dollars.
Very good. Any questions with Don? Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, at this time, uh, no other new business, anything from any of the council members? And in our audience, our young people, if anybody have any questions, raise your hand. Yes, sir. Stand up and...
Uh, for that project, uh, because of the energy efficiency, will it slowly, um, increase to the point that that money that we spent wasn't really, uh, will we gain profit off it? Will it buy itself back over time?
Understand.
Good question.
Understand, very good question, Robert. Um, nothing in, in the waste treatment business is profitable. Profit and waste treatment are, are definitely not two terms that go well together. However, it, there are some efficiencies that we're gaining in the project, in some energy, how we deal with what it takes to treat the water, with chemicals, with all the things that we use. Don can probably answer this in much more detail than I can, um, but we are gaining some efficiencies that we will recognize over time as we operate the new plant.
Anyone else? Well, thank y'all for coming tonight. I thank all the people. Dan, uh, enjoy your retirement. Maybe we'll get to see you a little bit back here. Uh, uh, thank you, everybody, uh, Connie and Connie, and, and all. We appreciate it very much. Thank you a lot. Meeting's adjourned.